All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 27th, City of Gardner Planning Commission meeting to order. Everyone will please rise and state their pledge of allegiance with me. Well, now moving to roll calls, starting on my right.
Freeman here.
Brady here.
Lavelle here.
Mater here.
Limmer here.
Roberts here.
Austin here.
Quorum is present. Moving into the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any item any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda made by Freeman with a second by Limmer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving into the regular agenda. Item 1A, Willow Chase 4 subdivision, Z-16-01. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for rezoning 6.74 acres from the COA Neighborhood Business District to R2 Two Family District located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and West 183rd Street. Submitted by Austin Chamberlain Complete LLC on behalf of MPK-GAR Holdings LLC, property owner of record. Do we have a presentation from staff this evening?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Chad Barr, Planner 1, to present the first agenda item for the night. As you stated, it's rezoning case Z-16-01. You'll see on this particular slide is the aerial map of the area with the subject property highlighted in red. It's 6.74 acres. It's requested to be rezoned to R2. It's part of a larger parcel that's about 12 to 13 acres in size. So currently, the parcel has dual zoning with the north portion with the existing R2 and the south portion with the CO-A, which is the Neighborhood Business District type zoning. If the zoning was successful, then it would no longer have the dual zoning, it would just be one zoning for the parcel. Area land uses, to the north, it's basically a grass field, remnant of a former field or agricultural use in the years past. To the east, to the east, excuse me, across Moonlight Road is a duplex development, which is newly started. To the south, there's a few rural residences. This is in unincorporated Johnson County. And to the west and northwest, there's already several duplexes that are already in existence. Moving on, with this particular slide, you see the application area highlighted in gray, and it shows the zoning areas. So to the north and to the west of the subject property, you see existing R2 zoning. To the east, across Moonlight Road is RP-2, which is a planned type of zoning of the same classification. There's a small wedge, if you will, that has M-1, kind of to the southeast. You have unincorporated rural Johnson County type zoning on the south side of West 183rd Street, and then, of course, the subject property in the center with the CO-A, which is the Neighborhood Business District. The Neighborhood Business District, it allows such land uses, accessory uses customarily incidental to the uses permitted in that zoning district, barber and beauty services, drugstores and prescription shops, dry cleaning and laundry establishments, convenience stores with or without gas pumps but not car washes, self-service laundries and dry clean establishments, and child and daycare facilities. Please note that this particular application, it was filed under the city's former zoning ordinance and not under the new land development code. It'll be reviewed using, as you saw in the staff report, in your packet, the criteria from the old zoning ordinance. The comprehensive plan calls for medium-density residential development, which R2 provides that type of development pattern. Now, a series of slides from the field. This particular field photo is looking east down West 183rd Street with subject property highlighted there in the kind of yellow color. This is looking north across West 183rd Street, again, the subject property highlighted in yellow. This one is looking west, northwest, down West 183rd Street, again, the property highlighted. Staff recommendation of case Z-16-01. After review of that particular application, a request to rezone 6.74 acres of a portion of parcel number CF221415-4002 located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and West 183rd Street in Gardner, Kansas, from CO-A, the Neighborhood Business District, to R2, the Two Family Residential District, and the staff report dated September 27th, 2016. We recommend to the Planning Commission that they would recommend approval of the request to the governing body. That would conclude my presentation unless you have any questions.
I don't think we have any questions at this time.
Okay.
We will now open the public hearing.
Okay.
If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals will be allotted three minutes, and folks representing a group will be allotted seven minutes. The applicant is here in attendance tonight. Now would be a good time if there's any comments.
Austin Chamberlain with Complete LLC, 8666 West 96th Street, Overland Park, Kansas. Appreciate your time today this evening. I just quickly wanted to, if you had any questions, or I have a few slides if you would care to look through it, and I can help explain or answer any of those.
That would be great.
Great. Is this my clicker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, it's like we're... Okay. Well, good. So, thank you very much for the presentation that was spot on, that we're downzoning a portion of it and putting those all into these twin homes. 64 total. The lots are about 10,000 square foot. Right now, we're working on the floor plans, but they'll be very similar to the property that we own that's just adjacent to this property, which is to the west there, along Sumac and, I'm sorry, is it, I forget the other street there in between. But all of those units are owned by us, managed by us. We've had them for quite some time, and we like to think we do a really good job of the management and upkeep, and we would like to do the similar type of home and construction and quality from there on these. Again, here's some of the photos of the property, and the property of some of the homes there as well. So it's a really, it's a really nice place, and we're excited to continue to do that here in Gardner. Any questions?
Don't think we have any questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I need that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
With a motion made by Lavelle with a second by Limmer that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. This is Planning Commission discussion, so if there's any questions or comments from staff, if not, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
After review of application number Z-16-01, a request to rezone 6.74 acres of a portion of parcel number of CF221425-4002 located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and West 183rd Street in Gardner, Kansas, from CO-A, Neighborhood Business District, to R2 Two Family Residential District, and the staff report dated 9/27/2006, the Planning Commission recommends approval of said request to the governing body.
Second.
With a motion made by Freeman with a second by Brady, that after review of application number Z-16-01, a request for zone 6.74 acres of a portion of parcel number of CF221425-4002 located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and West 183rd in Gardner, Kansas, from COA Neighborhood Business District to R2 Two Family Residential District, and the staff report dated 9/27/2016, the Planning Commission recommends approval of said request to the governing body. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on to item 1B of the regular agenda. This will be the second part of Willow Chase 4 subdivision, PP-16-01. Consider a request for preliminary plat for Willow Chase 4, a 12.99 acre, 32 lot, and three-track subdivision for duplex development located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and West 183rd Street, submitted by Austin Chamberlain Complete LLC on behalf of MPK-GAR Holdings LLC, property owner of record. Do we have a presentation from staff this evening?
Yes, we do. As you stated, this is a request for the preliminary plat, 16-01, for the Willow Chase 4 subdivision. This particular slide, there's several things, there's a lot of things going on, so I'll just kind of try to point them out and highlight them for you. The parcel boundary is kind of by that red ruby type color. The road right-of-way to be dedicated is identified with a blue line. You notice the chamfer, the diagonal chamfer down at the corner there, on the, via the northwest corner of the intersection there of 183rd and Moonlight, that diagonal portion. There's a pedestrian easement that's required through the Trails Master Plan for the north side of West 183rd Street. That's shown, it's hard to see because it's down on the south end, there's a lot of stuff going on down the south end of the subdivision plat, but it's kind of a, like tan or beige color. And then, the landscape easement is highlighted with green coloring. Got about 15 points here to go through to kind of summarize the application. As you stated, it consists of 12.99 acres. The proposal is 32 lots, and three tracks are proposed as well. Current zoning is in the north portion, R2, and the south portion is the CO-A, but you just saw that case earlier to request the south portion to the R2. Existing improvements consist of overhead power lines and water mains along the south and east property lines, that's for KC P&amp;L, and sanitary sewer along the south property line. Kansas Gas Service has an easement along the south property line as well, but no gas line is there now, but they have indicated a desire to expand a line in that easement prior to the development of this subdivision. No area of the application is in the 100-year floodplain, tract A, which is up in the northeast corner of the development, and tract C, which is in the southwest corner of the development, are designated as drainage detention areas. All of the bulk, meaning minimum dimensions, et cetera, standards of the zoning ordinance are met for all 32 lots. The zoning minimum is 10,000 square feet for a duplex type lot, 70 feet for the lot width, and then at least 115 feet for the lot depth, and all of those are met. The excise tax excludes the road right-of-way areas for arterial roads, which are designated South Moonlight and West 183rd Street. The remaining figure of the area to be platted would create an excise tax of a value of $89,358.98. The rate is calculated at 20 cents per square foot. That would be payable after the final plat is approved, not here with the preliminary plat. The proposed road right-of-way widths meet the city's subdivision regulations. They would be 50 feet for the, like, Dogwood Street and Hemlock Street and Hawthorne Street, and 60 feet for the half width for the west side of South Moonlight Road. The other exception to this would be 50 feet for the north half of West 183rd Street, where normally it would be a 60-foot arterial road half width, and what is being proposed here is 50 feet, but it also is the substance of rule exception request number one by the applicant to go with 50 feet instead of the 60-feet requirement. A 15-feet-wide landscape easement is required per the subdivision regulations, and this is provided at the back of lots 65 through 82. Only lot 65, the landscape easement there is proposed at 10 feet wide. This is rule exception request number two by the applicant. More on the landscape easement. This is supposed to be in addition to the lots, but as proposed, it is actually in the backs of those lots, 65 through 82, and this is rule exception request number three by the applicant. In the rule exception criteria stated in the subdivision regulations, that's Section 17.40.010 of the former subdivision regulations, that's when the application was filed, still when we had that. Staff believes that the criteria is met for each of the three requested rule exceptions. Track B, which is kind of in the center, basically on the northwest corner of Dogwood Street and Hemlock, that particular tract is proposed for a possible playground and to be maintained by the developer. Hemlock Street is the north-south street, which turns into Hawthorne Street, which then terminates in a cul-de-sac. Dogwood Street would connect and be extended easterly. To meet city access standards, Dogwood Street would need to be moved approximately 165 feet to 250 feet north from what is proposed and submitted. This adjustment is amicable. The applicant is okay with it.
(laughing).
And this would be a condition of preliminary plat approval, and then that would be accomplished in the end, at the final plat stage. Four-feet sidewalks are proposed, but five feet would be required per the new land development code. This is a condition of approval. The property would be served by public water. Existing mains would be extended to serve this subdivision. And a 10-feet-wide pedestrian trail required for the city's master parks and recreation plan would be furnished via a five-feet-wide easement at the south end of the plat. Part of this would be built over the Kansas Gas Service easement, and we've asked and they have expressed no particular issue with the trail being built over the gas line or their easement. And that would, oh wait, sorry. So the staff recommendation is approval of the preliminary plat for Willow Chase 4, a 12.99 acre, 32-lot duplex residential development located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and West 183rd Street in Gardner, Kansas, subject to the following six conditions. Number one, revise said preliminary plat to show five-feet sidewalks along the local roads. Number two, delete the requested rule exceptions 1, 2, and 3, because they have appeared on the face of the preliminary plat. However, if number one is approved, which is the right-of-way exception to go with 50 feet instead of the 60 feet for West 183rd feet, 183rd Street, that shall become a note on the final plat. Number three, approval of the governing body and publication of the proposed rezoning case Z-16-01 from CO-A to R2 for the subject property. Five, excuse me, number four, the applicant developer shall relocate the east portion of Dogwood Street that connects proposed Hemlock Street and South Moonlight Road to the north, a distance to be determined to meet the city's access management standard, figure 6.3. Number five, a new requested rule exception number two, allowing the landscape easement on lot 65 to be 10 feet wide and to be located within the proposed lot is approved, we'd recommend approval. As such, this would become a note on the final plat. And then, number six, a requested rule exception number three, allowing the landscape easement to be within the back of lots 65 through 82. As such, this would become a note on the final plat. And that would conclude the presentation unless there be any specific questions.
I don't think we have any specific questions at this time. I don't know if the applicant has anything they'd like to add.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin Chamberlain, Complete LLC. Do not have any other comments or questions.
Okay. Just what it says. You're given a double check.
Austin, I do have one quick follow-up question, and it was just about recommendation number one with the five-foot sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
That's something that's understood and not an issue in the lease.
Yes. Absolutely.
Great.
Thanks. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have any other questions or comments from staff or the applicant?
Yeah, a quick question for staff probably. What was the right-of-way for the road on that adjacent housing division? Was it, did I read that it was 50 feet as well off 183rd Street?
Commissioner Austin, I think right now, the, on the north side of West 183rd, it's currently at 40 feet of width.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
And this would add 10 feet to that, and then also the diagonal chamfer there on the corner.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. Any others? We don't have any? I would entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the request for a preliminary plat for Willow Chase, subject to conditions 1 through 6.
Second.
There's a motion made by Freeman with a second by Limmer that we approve the preliminary plat for Willow Chase 4, subject to conditions 1 through 6. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thank you. Moving down, item number two, wireless facility conditional use permit, CUP-16-01. Hold a public hearing for and consider a request for a conditional use permit for a wireless facility located at 790 East Warren Street, submitted by GTP Infrastructure One LLC. Do we have a staff presentation on this this evening?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. This particular slide shows the aerial photo and application area. The property is highlighted in blue, and the actual, as you could say, the subject application area would be a very northeast corner of the subject property. So don't look at the X on this one. That's not worth happening at, so. The area under application is located at 790 East Warren Street. It's located on a lumberyard property. It's used as a lumberyard, which began service in 2000, the year 2000. The current wireless facility was developed in 2006 after a conditional use permit was approved by the city. It had a 10-year time span, or validity time, which expired in July of this year. Additional improvements are desired, but first, this new conditional use permit is to be considered. The tower, as it stands, is 120 feet in height. It was built under the former zoning ordinance, but now is being reviewed under the city's new land development code. The Kansas City Power and Light land use to the east of the subject property was established prior to 1991, and the City of Gardner Electrical Substation, also on the east side, was established in 1995 after a conditional use permit was approved for its use. Now, moving on to some field photos. This is looking north-northeast at the tower from East Warren Street. This is looking northwest at the facility from Moonlight Road. You can see the electrical substation in the foreground. This one's looking south-southwest at the facility. This is actually from the BN and SF Railroad right-of-way, but you can see the tower, and it's got fencing, security fencing, and then some volunteer trees, and it looks like on the north side, some pine trees that have been planted. At least, they look like they're in a row, so. Moving on, this is an overall property site plan. You can see along the top of the screen, three different easements, 35-feet-wide utility easement, an additional 10-feet utility easement, and then also a 15-feet landscape easement. The lease area is highlighted in orange with the actual tower location highlighted in red on this particular slide. And then, you can see the 15-feet-wide access easement that comes from East Warren Street back to the facility, highlighted in blue. And then, you can see the subject property with its existing buildings and some of the property owners to the east of the subject property. Regarding buffering and/or screening, site landscape buffering is required on the east side of the property boundary. This is via Section 8.02, Item B, Table 8-2 of the Land Development Code, because the subject property is adjacent to residential zoning. On the east side, the zoning is R1, to be specific. These requirements are for a minimum buffer planting of one tree for 30 linear feet, one evergreen per 15 linear feet, or one, or a 6-feet solid fence with plant materials to the outside, one shrub for every 10 linear feet, and at least 20 feet perimeter buffer depth, or width, if you will. That side of the use or the enclosure is 40 linear feet in length. The applicant has requested the city waive the landscape buffering requirement because they believe the adjacent electrical substation is likely to continue, and that it is not reasonable to screen the use from the adjacent electrical substation facilities because the land uses are similar in impact and appearance, i.e., both are basically industrial-type land uses or utility type. Staff supports a deviation from this requirement, given this fact that the land use to the east is the electrical power substation, and that's industrial in nature and unlikely to convert to residential land use. Now, more substantive notes specific to the application. These are, this number one here is, several items are required of the Land Development Code for wireless communication facilities. These are found in Section 5.05 W1A through G, and then number 2, A through J. For number two here, all of these items are met except for a few with this particular application. Items not met, but the passing by the Kansas State Legislature of the Kansas Siting Act, House Bill 2131, and it becomes effective October 1st, or just basically in, what, three or four days, waives the following items of the Land Development Code requirements. Roman numeral 1, it's W1C, and this normally would prescribe justifying the site selection and comparing to all potential sites within one-half mile of the subject property. Roman numeral 2, W1E, prescribes an explanation of the need for the facility. Roman numeral 3, W1F, prescribes the intention to share space on the tower with other carriers. Roman numeral 4, W1G1, this prescribes where an applicant can show with the landowner that they have an agreement to enter into a lease with other carriers for co-location. And Roman numeral 5, W1G2 is the location in the Land Development Code. This prescribes the landowner shall be responsible for removing the tower or facility in the event the leasee fails to remove it upon abandonment. Excuse me. The Kansas Siting Act, Section 1F5, states that an authority cannot require the removal of an existing tower as a condition of approval of a new one. However, it also states this provision shall not preclude an authority from adopting reasonable rules with respect to the removal of abandoned wireless support structures or wireless facilities. Removal of an abandoned wireless support structure is not addressed in the lease provided by the applicant as required by the LDC. Staff suggests that this would be a condition of approval, as the applicant has stated that they do not want to negotiate the existing lease with the landowner. Then, number three here, W2C, this prescribes that a reinspection of the tower facility shall take place every five years to ensure structural integrity- shall take place every five years to ensure structural integrity and safety of the antennas. This was not met, but is addressed via condition of approval, as we see here in just a moment. A structural report was submitted with the application, and showed the tower is adequate for the proposed new antennas, but this appears to be based upon data and reports from two thousand and six, and not from a recent field inspection, which is the wording in the LDC. So, this leads to staff to recommend to the planning commission that you'd recommend of the conditional use permit sixteen dash zero-one for wireless facility at seven-nine-zero East Warren Street to the governing body with the following two conditions. Number one, the owner of the facility, wireless facility slash tower, shall be responsible for the removal of the wireless facility slash tower, should the facility become unused and abandoned for a period of time exceeding six months. In the failure of the wireless facility slash owner to do this, it shall become the responsibility of the landowner upon which the wireless facility slash tower exists, to perform this duty. Number two, the communication tower and antenna shall be field inspected and approved by a licensed structural engineer, registered in the state of Kansas, before the placement of additional antenna, and shall thereafter be re-inspected by such professional every five years, to ensure the structural integrity and safety of the antenna, and proof of the field inspections shall thereafter be submitted to the city. And that would conclude the presentation, unless you have any questions.
If you have any questions at this time, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It wasn't on the slide, but this case will also be taken up by Johnson County Planning as well, and that's because of its location, its nearness, within the one mile of the New Century Air Center. So, once whatever gets done with the city, then the county will also look at it as well.
Great, thanks, John. We'll now open the public hearing. If anyone likes to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allotted three minutes, and those representing a group are allotted seven minutes. Do we have the applicant in attendance tonight? This would be a good time for your presentation.
My name is Mark Sprecker. I'm an attorney at Pulsonelli. My address is sixty-two oh-one College Boulevard, Suite five hundred, over in Park, Kansas. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and the landowner. As you were just informed, we're here seeking somewhat of a renewal of this CUP, even though it's a new application. Staff has adequately described the tower, where it is, in our comments. I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Great.
Is this a ten-year renewal, then? Great question. Pardon me?
That would be up to you.
Yeah, Commissioner Brady, that, we, at this time, we haven't suggested any time limit, as was the prior conditional use permit. That would be up to the, I guess, the planning commission's discretion.
Do we have other questions for the applicant?
So, does our motion need to include if we want?
If we wanted to.
Ryan's looking into something.
Yeah, I think the new Siting Act requires approvals of ten years. That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
The new legislation?
You're right, which will become effective the end of this week.
Saturday.
Yeah, Tuesday first, Thursday. Mm-hmm. Right. Let me, I could put my hand on it.
Mr. Hallen, what was your understanding of how full-length is this?
My understanding is that we were hoping for as much as you would give us.
(laughing).
Yeah, you're right. The Siting Act says that you have to give, now, now, that's a public-owned land, this is not a public-owned land. There is a reference to ten years, like, as you said, Ryan.
Yeah.
That's on city-owned property.
Take me a minute to put my hands on it.
Would that be a maximum, then, or a minimum?
Minimum. Limit for less than ten years, the duration of the approval of an application. Yeah, so it is.
Got one F eighteen?
Yes, yes.
He's right.
Ten years?
Ten years is the minimum.
Right, F-one-eighteen. The House Bill twenty-one thirty-one, so we have to give it for at least ten years.
Yeah, we have the property locked up for another twenty-five, so we would ask for that if possible.
All right. I don't think we have other questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move?
Motion to close the public hearing made by Freeman with a second by Brady. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. The public hearing is now closed. So, with that stated, I don't think we have any other questions, but it would appear that we would need to add an item three into the motion, stating a duration.
Ready for that?
Good.
I recommend, recommend approval of the request for conditional use permit, CUP dash one-six dash zero-one, to the governing body. A request for a wireless communication facility located at seven-nine-zero East Warren Street, based on review of the staff report dated nine-twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, and subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the owner of the wireless facility tower shall be responsible for the removal of the wireless facility slash tower, should the facility become unused and abandoned for a period of time exceeding six months. In the failure of the wireless facility slash, in the failure of the wireless, the owner of the wireless facility to do this, it shall become the responsibility of the landowner upon which the wireless facility slash tower exists to perform this duty. Condition two, the communication tower and the antenna shall be field inspected and approved by a licensed structural engineer, registered in the state of Kansas, before the placement of the additional antenna, and shall thereafter be re-inspected by such professional every five years, to ensure the structural integrity of the, and safety of the antenna, and proof of such field inspections and approvals shall thereafter be submitted to the city. Condition three, the conditional use permit shall expire after twenty-five years from date of approval.
Second.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Limer, that the planning commission approve, recommend approval of the request for the conditional use permit, CUP dash one-six dash zero-one, to the governing body. A request for a wireless communication facility located at seven-nine-zero East Warren Street, based on review of the staff report dated nine-twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen, and subject to the following conditions. One, the owner of the wireless facility tower shall be responsible for the removal of the wireless facility tower, should the facility become unused and abandoned for a period of time exceeding six months. In the failure of the wireless facility owner to do this, it shall become the responsibility of the landowner upon which the wireless facility tower exists, to perform this duty. Two, the communication tower and antenna shall be field inspected and approved by a licensed structural engineer, registered in the state of Kansas, before the placement of additional antenna, and shall thereafter be re-inspected by such professional every five years, to ensure the structural integrity and safety of the antenna, and proof of such field inspections and approvals shall thereafter be submitted to the city. Three, CUP shall expire twenty-five years after approval. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Item number three, Copper Springs Five Final Plat, FP dash one-six dash zero-three. Consider a request for a final plat for Copper Springs Five, a nine-point-two-six acre, thirty-five lot, single-family residential development, located north of the alignment of West Hundred-and-sixty-third Street and west of Moonlight Road, submitted by David Rhodes, property owner. Do we have a presentation from staff this evening?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. If I get right into this one, this one here shows an aerial photograph, and it shows the application area, highlighted in red. It currently has R dash one, which is single-family residential-type zoning, consists of nine-point-two-six Now, this isn't a mistake. I put this particular slide in, in purpose. It says preliminary plat fifteen oh-three. If you remember that case, if you were on the board, excuse me, on the planning commission late last year, early this year, this showed, I wanted to use this to kind of show the whole thing, how it kind of interlocks together. And so, here, what you show is Copper Springs, you know, one and two are to the north, Copper Springs Three is on the west-hand side, or the left-hand slide, side of the slide, Copper Springs Four is highlighted in blue, which has been approved, and I think will be under development soon. And you'll see here, highlighted in red, Copper Springs Five, and then also, what was part of that preliminary plat was the green area, which would be Copper Springs Six. One thing I'll note here in just a minute, is that you'll notice that with the preliminary plat, it showed University Drive going to the north, or being extended to the north to attach to the south end of Copper Springs One, but there's been a change on that. But this particular plat, I want to go ahead to, there we go, consists of thirty-five lots. The preliminary plat was approved in February of this year by this planning commission. Much of the infrastructure has already been installed, except the top layer of asphalt for the roads, which were installed upon, which will be installed upon plat approval and recording. Also, gas service, electrical service, and streetlights will be installed as the subdivision develops. The three roads that will be a part of this subdivision will be Hundred-and-sixty-third Street, Hundred, excuse me, Hundred-and-sixty-second Street, Hundred-and-sixty-second Terrace, and University Drive. The application is being reviewed according to the City of Gardner Land Development Code, although the preliminary plat was reviewed according to the former subdivision regulations. Given the existing R dash one zoning, section four point zero-two D of the city's new Land Development Code, or LDC, there is a ten percent open space requirement. To change the final plat to include this would effectively make the preliminary and final plat substantially different, and as such, would cause the approved preliminary plat to have to be redone. Given the proposed final plat's nearness to a trail, which is to be established with future subdividing in this quarter section, in which it is located, this should be given consideration as an equivalent substitute. So, staff would submit that. The approved preliminary plat showed University Drive being extended to the north. To connect with the south end of Copper Springs One, this submittal does not show University Drive being extended that far, but the future submittal of Copper Springs Six will complete the University Drive to the north. Staff has reviewed this and finds this acceptable, and not a significant departure from the approved preliminary plat. Where the one, I used an old field photo that showed, looking east on Hundred-and-sixty-second Terrace, you can see the existing asphalt and curbing and fire hydrant. Of course, that would get overlaid and brought up to a current city code upon final plat construction. One new thing, from the Land Development Code, from the former subdivision regulations, excuse me, and that is the planting of street trees, and so, a street tree plan has been submitted by the applicant. And these would be planted in the tree lawn area. The tree lawn area is defined as the area from the back of the street curb to where the sidewalk begins. You think of that width there as the tree lawn area. The width of this area is related to whether a developer has to choose whether a small tree, or a medium-sized tree, or a large tree is planted. Now, this does not have to do with the size at planting, but it would be, have to do with the size of the tree at maturity, even though the city does have a standard for planting when they're first planted, for size. The developer, as we can see here, has provided a street tree plan, and has chosen the small type trees within the tree lawn area, given that that is five feet in width. As proposed, these are generally spaced between forty to sixty feet on center, and that would be meeting the requirement as dictated in section four point zero-one-C of the Land Development Code for local, standard-type streets. The first street tree plan indicated three different species of trees, one for each tree frontage along University Drive and Hundred-and-sixty-second Street, Hundred-and-sixty-second Terrace. Excuse me. To meet the city's requirement for tree diversity, found in section eight oh-three-C, table eight dash three, these three types of trees should be intermingled. This has been addressed with a condition of approval found coming up here in a bit. But since this time I was, it was written, the applicant has submitted a revised street tree plan, where it does show the intermingling of the three different species on each street, and so therefore, that requirement is met, and so we would ask, when we get to that particular slide, that the actual condition of approval, number one, be removed. Number two here on my notes, an excise tax is levied for the act of plating, a final plat. The current tax rate is twenty cents per square foot of area to be platted. This plat includes nine-point-two-six acres, which is four thousand and three, one hundred and ninety-one square feet, and therefore, the excise tax will be eighty thousand, six-hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. This tax must be paid prior to the release of the final plat for recording. For construction plans, this is something that's required of the new LDC. Construction plans are required to be submitted and be reviewed at this time, but for construction plans for utilities, infrastructure, and public facilities, public works informs staff, this is not normally submitted at this stage in the development process, because the applicant does not know the outcome of the application, or if the application may be changed as a result of the approval process, thus precluding construction design. The construction plans will occur after the final plat has been approved, so the applicant knows exactly what is expected of them. Condition of approval, number three, meets or addresses this particular requirement. Public improvements will be constructed upon the final plat approval, and required excise tax being paid, and said plat being recorded. The applicant slash developer will be required to submit a performance and maintenance bond to the city when they pick up their public improvement permit for the installation of public improvements. So, this leads to the staff recommendation on final plat case sixteen dash zero-three. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the requested final plat of Copper Springs Five, consisting of thirty-five lots for single-family residential development, with the following conditions, and that the planning commission forward the plat to the governing body for acceptance of right-of-way and easements. This is one change, but another change from the former subdivision regulations to the Land Development Code, or before, where you would approve, like, the plat and accept, you see, where you'd recommend approval of the plat, and acceptance of right-of-way and dedication to the city council, the governing body, and now you can actually approve the final plat, but we would still take the, any acceptance of easements and road right-of-way dedication, still go on to city council for their approval and review. So, that leads to these three conditions. Number one, the street tree plan shall be revised to intermingle the tree species per each street. We would, staff would recommend that be struck. So, then, the number two would become number one. The excise tax will be paid to the city prior to recording, and then number three would become number two. The construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications. That would conclude the presentation, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Do we have the applicant with us this evening?
I'm Dave Rhodes with Gardner Property Partners, and all the Vessel Estates, three-thirty-five West Madison, Gardner, Kansas. Really, this is just extending and completing the existing phase. I would hope to be back here a year from now to do those interior lots that are about sixty-six lots, between Cannon Street and University Drive. At that time, we would propose that we would finish University Drive. At the end of Hundred-and-sixty-second Terrace, we did put a fire turnaround in the end of that, and we would propose that we would put that in the end of Hundred-and-sixty- And we would propose that we would put that in the end of one hundred and sixty-second Street as well. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Have any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we entertain a motion on this item? Great, we don't have any.
I move that after review of final plat number FP dash one-six dash zero three, a request for the final plat of Copper Springs five, consisting of a nine point two-six acre portion of parcel CF two-two-one-four-one-three dash three-zero-zero-one. And staff report dated nine twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. The planning commission approved the plat provided the following conditions are met and recommend to the governing body that they accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements. Condition number one, the excise tax will be paid to the city prior to recording. Condition number two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, and public facilities shall meet the technical specifications.
Second.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Brady.
Freeman.
It was Freeman? Gosh, you guys are trying to sound alike. Okay. Motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman. You're going to have to change it up here. That after review of final plat number FP dash one-six dash zero three, request for the final plat of Copper Springs five, consisting of a nine point two-six acre portion of parcel CF two-two-one-four-one-three dash three-zero-zero-one. And staff report dated nine twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. The planning commission approves the plat provided the following conditions are met and recommends the governing body accept dedication of right-of-way and easements. Number one, the excise tax will be paid to the city prior to recording. Number two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. That concludes the regular agenda items. I don't know if staff has anything final for us? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Brady with a second by Lovella that we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting's adjourned with everyone in favor. I know, right?
Oh, yeah, quicker, yeah. Catching up. Catching up, yeah. Thank you. And I've already got the two ordinances. I'll have to modify my list or whatever for the rezoning, the CUP. And then I've got, I'm working on the CAS already to put all that stuff. I just try to work ahead because I don't work well behind.
I know.
I got, oh, thank you.